Get out of our way here a little bit to get a little bit of sunshine here in the capital city. But having said that, it is time for our next segment, our monthly visit with the Laramie County Commissioners. And we have the chairman of the commission, Ms. Amber Ash. Glad to have you here today, Amber. How are you?
I'm great, Gary. Thank you.
Great, great. And I see you about once every five months or something like that. So tell us a little bit about kind of update us somewhat on what's been going on. I know there's been some things going on in the county since you and I last, like K nine four mobility got built out there. And I don't know if I'm sure you county commissioners were out there when the secretary of the interior department of interior came out and started talking about the sage grouse in the county. I know that's probably more state, but it does deal with Laramie County. Give us a little update of what's going on.
Um, well, I think, you know, there's a lot of different things going on, which is just evident by how many different grant applications we've been working on for like the Wyoming Business Council. And so originally, we thought we would have five applications that had to be in by the June first deadline, which is really an indicator of where Laramie County is at and that it's growing. Two of the applications were postponed until the September deadline. They just needed more time to get the information together. One of those is the distillery over in Pine Bluffs.
Okay, yeah, I remember hearing about that.
And so that one, they're, they're still trying to finalize the, the location of where they're going to put it. You know, they're evaluating, you know, cost of water and sewer and, and all those kinds of things to make sure that they have a solid project that they can go forward with. The other one, the federal rules changed at the last minute. So it had to do with the requirements for rail cars and the federal rules for the upgrades and changes that had to be made changed. And so they pulled back their application simply so that they could evaluate those changes. And then they'll come back based on those changes. They're going to have to change the structure of their project a little bit. And we're hoping to see them in September as well.
You know, I'm really kind of surprised that the distillery out there, especially out in that part of the county would have got the go ahead, especially with all this hubbub about the water aquifers and being lower out there in Alvin and Carpenter and Pine Bluffs in that area than more so on this end of it. What are, what's the perspective on that? You know, as far as is there going to be enough water? Is this going to drain a lot of water? What details do you know about that?
I didn't bring the actual applicant or the, the handout that we got. So I don't have the exact water usage numbers with me. But from what I understand is it goes through essentially a three-part process. And so part of what they're working on is how they can recycle the water between the different cycles so that they're not pulling as much water down instead of being able to use that. And then once it's gone through all three, you know, been reused and recycled, however many times they're able to do that, then being able to use it for some type of irrigation. So they're, they're really cognizant of the fact that, you know, water is a limited resource and you have to be able to, you know, basically they have to go to DQ and get, or, you know, the, the state engineer's office and get the appropriate permits for the water usage. And, and that was part of the conversation too, because that was the first thing I think I asked him when they came before us is, you know, something like this probably takes a significant amount of water. How are you going to address that? And, and so they've been working with the state engineers office. And part of what they're working on, one of the, the locations is actually in Pine Bluffs. And so being able to connect into Pine Bluffs water and sewer system.
All right, we're talking with County Commissioner, Laramie County Commissioner, Amber Ash. She is the chairman of the commission as well. Let's go to the phones. Good morning, you're on with Amber Ash.
Good morning. I just wanted to comment on the, the distillery. I am somewhat familiar with the project. I've been following it. It is planned to use a surprisingly small amount of water. They've stated that like a five gallon a minute well would, which should amply supply it, which is kind of amazing. But so, so it shouldn't be a big water draw problem for us out there. Hopefully, hopefully it goes forward. I'd sure like to see it going on. Gene Purdy, the guy that's kind of heading up is a big guy and a good community member. And I think it'll be a giant asset to our east side of the county out here. So the only other comment I wanted to make is just have the listeners remember that why Pine Bluffs has a low, has a water problem is because the upstream users on the west side of the county are using it. You know, the comment, you know, so like moving, like moving this distillery to the west side of the, of the county won't necessarily fix the problem. Just take more water from the east side.
Thank you for that reminder.
Thank you.
All right, take care. So, and, and great call. And then also, Amber, this is going to provide, I can't remember, is it like 300 jobs or something like that?
For the distillery initially, I want to say it was like five or six jobs. And then they were going to start adding to that.
Okay, maybe it was 50 when it's all said and done. I can't remember, but I know it was going to provide some jobs for some folks here or there.
Well, and I think, you know, you have to consider that in, in Pine Bluffs. I mean, five or six jobs is significant. And so, and as it continues to grow and it continues to add, that's where it really becomes significant. And the really cool thing about this, this project is that it's, it's taking a Wyoming project, product, and it's enhancing the value of it so that it could be sold to craft breweries, microbreweries, which is really cool that we can take a product that's already in Wyoming, that we're already growing and selling, and then we can value enhance it and sell it for, for more. And so, you know, the ability to see that niche in the market and the need for that, I think if my recall is right, what they would be producing would account for less than 1% of what's used by craft breweries. So there's definitely, you know, room in the market for the product. And yeah, I think it's, it's an exciting project.
All right, we're talking with County Commissioner Chairman Amber Ash. Eight twenty one is the time. We'll take a break. We'll also hear more of the cool things that are going on in the county and/or maybe some things we need to give attention to. Feel free to call us at six three two sixty five hundred or six three two thirty three twenty three. My name is Gary Freeman. This is K G A B mornings. More to come straight ahead.
It's tough to compete for jobs. Degrees can help. Registration is open at Laramie County Community College. It starts here. Visit l c c c dot W Y dot E D U. L triple C in Cheyenne and Laramie. It starts here.
The Wind River Casino is already your party destination. And now with its own hotel, it's your daycation getaway. The Wind River Hotel and Casino, featuring eighty seven modern beautifully appointed rooms and three luxurious suites. It's the perfect end trip or just for a day. Enjoy Wyoming's best casino action and fine dining in the Red Willow Restaurant. So if time is short, make your next vacation a daycation at the Wind River Hotel and Casino.
When we seek advice and information, we look for an expert. Fortunately, we have local experts right here in our community.
Tune in the fourth Tuesday of every month to K G A B and listen to the helpful folks from Capital Roofing as we discuss current topics and trends regarding your home's exterior needs. I'm Dennis from Capital Roofing. We've been serving the region for nearly 30 years with just that. If you've got questions, comments, and concerns and praises to share, let's talk. That's the fourth Tuesday of every month on K G A B at eight AM.
For more advice and insight from this local expert, visit k g a b dot com now.
Are you feeling rundown? Do you have aches, pains, or illnesses that just keep hanging around? Chronic medical conditions require an internal medicine healthcare provider. A team of experts can help you to manage a number of conditions, including asthma, heart disease, respiratory illness, back pain, and many more. Call today to see what Cheyenne Regional Internal Medicine can do for you. Three oh seven nine nine six one five six zero. Three oh seven nine nine six one five six zero.
Whether you're planting a tree or digging a foundation, contact One Call of Wyoming at one eight hundred eight four nine twenty four seventy six or eight one one. Call two business days before you dig. It's free and required by law. Repairs to utilities can be expensive. Cutting a gas line or electrical line can be deadly. No matter if it's weekend yard work or major construction, call One Call of Wyoming at one eight hundred eight four nine twenty four seventy six or eight one one. Sponsored by Public Service Commission, Wyoming Association of Broadcasters and this station.
And now more K G A B mornings with Gary Freeman on AM six fifty K G A B.
Hey, good morning. Eight twenty four is the time here on Cheyenne's number one news talk radio station, AM six fifty K G A B and k g a b dot com. Don't forget, it is National Donut Day today. And if you're wanting to grab you some donuts, head on over to Twentieth Street. The Salvation Army Church got like 3,500 donuts they've got to get rid of. So you can head on over there, grab you up some donuts, whether you've got a carload or just a couple of folks in the car. Go by, they will hook you up with some donuts and you can celebrate National Donut Day. My name is Gary Freeman. I am in studio here with Amber Ash. She is the chairman of the Laramie County Commission. Glad to have her with us. And it's good to see you, Amber.
So, um, I think a follow up to the conversation that we were having before the break, one of the things that I really wanted to talk about was the fire station I've been working on.
Oh, yeah. Great. Let's do it.
And so the, the idea is that we would do a joint fire station out at Archer. So it would be for fire districts one and two. And people who live on the east side may or may not be aware, most of the time when you buy a house, you don't think, where's my closest fire station? But we have one, Fire District two, the closest one would be north of Del Range on College. And Fire District one is coming off of Allison over by South Cheyenne Water and Sewer to go east out to the, like Archer, to provide those services. And it takes time to get out there. And so one of the things that I've been working on is getting a fire station out there. We had, we've gotten the proposals in, we got proposals from five different firms to do the design and engineering.
I have to ask, anyone local at all? Do you guys try to get a bid from anybody local?
Um, I believe we do have people local. I haven't, I know we had 15 companies show up. I'm going to pick up the RFPs, the proposals today to see. So I'm guessing we probably had local companies, but I won't see them till today.
Fair enough.
And then we'll interview, I want to say next week, it may be the week after. But we'll interview those firms that did the proposals and we'll be picking somebody to go ahead and do the design work on that. We're hoping to do, apply for, it's an economic development grant in order to help pay for the, the fire station. And it's, it's really, I think what's really neat about this one is the effort between districts one and two and, and to be able to provide those services, you know, to everybody without having to build two different fire stations. We just have one and be able to dispatch. And then also, you know, to provide support services to other fire districts because being right on I eighty, it is so quick for them from Archer to get on I eighty and, you know, hit interstate and go to respond to districts four or six or, you know, whoever might need help. And, and so in that respect, then it helps benefit a very large portion of the county.
So let me ask you, and, and I know there, there, you know, you've, you've got these people that are drawing up plans and, and all these things. So I, I can't really say if we know the cost. Maybe you do, maybe you don't yet. But what is the budget as far as Laramie County's end of it? I know you're getting grants, but what will it cost the, the county or how much money is going to be fed into that? Or do we know that yet?
We don't have that yet. That's part of what this proposal that we're, that I'm going to pick up today will contain in it is they'll do the initial design phase, you know, and then they'll do the preliminary cost estimate of what we think it's going to cost to build this. Basically to get all the information we need in order to be able to look at all the different funding sources, look at grants, those kinds of things and see what we can apply for and how we can get it funded.
All right, that would be great. And, and how many, how many engines do you expect this to house? Three, four, two?
Well, part of what we're working on, and the thing that's really important in the design of this is that it's semi, I want to call it modular. I don't, I'm not sure that's exactly the right term, but to where we can build on. And so, you know, we would start with a much smaller design. And then as, you know, the community continues to grow, there's the capability of instead of building more fire stations to add on base to this. And, you know, it's been done in other places and, and, you know, kudos to the fire districts. They've been really helpful in helping us get this designed out.
Yeah. And, and I know they know firsthand the need because of the guys that get the calls. And so I'm sure once you have conversations with them, it broadens your vision as a county commissioner and gives you information on, well, what do we need to do? What can we do to bring this to fruition? We're talking with Laramie County Commissioner Amber Ash here this morning. Eight twenty nine is the time coming up on Fox News. Also, we'll hear from Doug Randall and News Plus Kevin Coyle with Y O Prep Sports. And we'll hear more from the chairman of the Laramie County Commissioners here on K G A B mornings. My name is Gary Freeman. It's a Friday. Go away clouds. Give us a little bit of sunshine for today, will you? Hope you're having a wonderful morning. Good morning.
AM six fifty K G A B. Up to the minute news.
From the K G A B News Center, I'm Doug Randall. A shared man who already has one child abuse conviction on his record will be spending time behind bars after admitting he committed the same offense with a different victim. Kevin Coyle has details.
Luke Van Burcom was sentenced to four to five years in prison after he pleaded guilty to one charge of child abuse. The Natchitoches County Sheriff's Office says in August 2014, the mother of the two children reported they had been assaulted while under Van Burcom's care. One of the children said he and his younger brother were alone with Van Burcom and were picking up trash in their yard. Van Burcom, who was drinking, was upset they were not working fast enough and took the boy inside and spanked him. The younger brother then went inside and when he came back out, he had a bloody nose, a red line across the bridge of his nose and a blistered hand. In the interview, the younger child said Van Burcom hit him on one ear with an open hand and the other ear with a closed fist, all while holding the young boy's hand in hot water from a sink, later determined to be one hundred and thirty seven point five degrees. Van Burcom originally told sheriff's deputies a different version of events, but could not explain why only one of the child's hands was burned. Van Burcom already has one child abuse conviction back in 2005 on his criminal record. Reporting from Casper, I'm Kevin Coyle.
State economist Jim Robinson says Wyoming's economy grew over the past year, although not as much as usual.
The state did see an overall increase of a little bit less than 1%. And normally, we would expect to see this, you know, the state would probably have about one and a half percent job growth. And so, you know, that we still have that positive job growth is probably just not as good just because of that drag that we're seeing in the mining industry right now.
Oil and gas, by the way, are classified under the mining industry in state statistics. A construction company is investigating what caused part of a structure at Laramie High School to give way, dropping two construction workers and several tons of steel forty feet below. The men were lifting steel beams into place when the structure they were standing on yielded beneath them. Workers used construction equipment to free one man who was pinned beneath the steel. Fire Department Company Officer Kevin Lamb says both were transported to the hospital to have fractures and internal injuries treated. Their condition remains unknown. More news on demand at k g a b dot com. Doug, have a wonderful weekend, sir. We'll see you on Monday. All right. Very good. Eight thirty three is the time. Time for John Gabrielson being filled in by Kevin Coyle with your Y O Prep Sports.
Welcome to the Y O preps dot com radio report for a Friday. I'm Kevin Coyle. There's something to be said about playing a baseball game under the lights. And for the longest time, the Legion Baseball Program in Level had yet to do so on their own field before this year. Back on Monday, the Mustangs flipped the switch for the first time and lit up the field behind Rocky Mountain High School in Cali for their Northwest Quadrant double header versus Powell. Ray Peterson of the Level Baseball Program says it took quite some time to raise the funding for the lights, but now that they're in, it will be very beneficial to the baseball community.
What's really exciting is to see these young kids at that game under the lights, not the players, but the, the little leakers that come to the game and watch the game and they're eating a hot dog and watching the ballplayers play. And we feel that it's going to be a complete change to our program to have these younger players feel like, hey, I want to do this. And so as far as baseball overall is concerned, it's going to strengthen the baseball program from Little League, T-ball, Bayou age and Legion age, letting players know that, hey, this is exciting. When fans show up and applaud, kids want to be a part of that. And we haven't had that before with these day games. Everybody had to work.
The Level Mustangs managed to split Monday's doubleheader versus Powell, losing the first game, but came back to win the nightcap. The A League State Tournament will be held at Level late next month. I'll be back with more in a moment.
No matter what your level of hearing loss or speech disability, Wyoming Relay can help. Wyoming Relay is a free service that offers telephone services and specialized equipment. So you can call anyone, anytime, anywhere. Wyoming Relay provides telephone access for people with hearing loss or people with speech disabilities. Wyoming Relay, a call anyone can make. Just dial seven one one or go to wyomingrelay.com. Another smart resource from Wyoming Workforce Services.
And that's the ballgame. The Warriors pick up a good win today, but the game isn't over. Let's see if they all make it home safe. The first player slides into the passenger seat and reaches for the seatbelt. Two other players are roughhousing in the backseat. Mom is already buckled in in the driver's seat. She shoots them a stern look in the rearview mirror, and that's all it took. Both players buckle themselves in. Remember, the game is not over until everyone makes it home safe. Buckle up every passenger, every trip, every time. Paid for with federal highway safety funds.
The Legion baseball schedule is starting to pick up the pace now that the spring sports season is over and most schools have held their graduation ceremonies. Riverton is hosting their Roy Peck Woodbat Tournament this weekend with six teams. Changing sports, final stats from the 2015 high school soccer season have been posted at y o preps dot com. And tomorrow, Shrine Bowl football players report to Casper to begin preparing for next Saturday's big game. This has been your daily prep report. For more on Wyoming High School sports, log on to y o preps dot com.
Everything is stuck in gear right now. The weather pattern is just going to repeat itself. Today through Sunday, the risk of afternoon and evening thunderstorms will remain high in the region. And as we've seen, there will be some severe weather with heavy rain, hail, and strong gusty winds. The immediate Cheyenne area missed the severe weather yesterday. It stayed just northwest of town and northwest Laramie County. And then we had a lot of severe weather just south of the border along I twenty five in Colorado. Today through Sunday, that risk of severe weather will remain high.
Southwest Wyoming's Weekend of Fun is back. This year, Flaming Gorge Days presents Love and Fapt and Blackjack Billy for a night of pure country. Friday, June twenty sixth, six PM, Stratton Myers Park in Green River. Get your tickets now at flaminggorgedays.com. Brought to you by the City of Green River and Sweetwater County Travel and Tourism
The West comes alive for one week this summer in Casper. And right out of the chute, bulls will rage, ropes will fly, and competitors will fall. And all of Wyoming will come together to tip our hats to champions. But dust settles. Like the rest of summer, CNFR Week will go fast. Plan your trip to the Rose Bowl of College Rodeo, June fourteenth through twentieth, and save up to 20% on your hotel when you book at visitcasper.com.
For today through Sunday, expect the weather to change little. We'll have more clouds and sun, some areas of morning fog, and expect afternoon and evening thunderstorms today, Saturday, and Sunday. Some thunderstorms and showers could be strong to severe with heavy rain, hail, and strong winds. Highs will be sixty five to seventy today, low seventy Saturday, sixty five to seventy Sunday with overnight lows in the lower fifties. I'm meteorologist Don Day with more weather on demand at k g a b dot com.
At Cheyenne Radiology Group, you don't have to make the choice between high quality and low price. We offer the care you deserve at the reasonable prices you want. So if your doctor says you need an MRI, X-ray, CT scan, or ultrasound, ask for Cheyenne Radiology Group. Quality care at reasonable prices. Cheyenne Radiology Group, six three four seven seven one one.
Cheyenne Radiology Group, knowing is better.
No sooner, be certain.
Mariachis and authentic Hispanic food will be taking over the Cheyenne Depot Plaza June fifth and sixth for the annual Wyoming Pork Producer Cheyenne Hispanic Festival. Don't miss out on the jalapeno eating contest, Hispanic art show, kids activities, a car show, and a farewell tour concert from Al Hurricane Saturday night. You're guaranteed to find something for everyone. The Wyoming Pork Producer Cheyenne Hispanic Festival, sponsored by the Wyoming Arts Council, DDA, City of Cheyenne, and the Cheyenne Depot Museum. We'll see you there.
Town Square Media invites all hands on deck for the return of the Great River Raph Race Saturday, July eleventh in Casper. Here's how to join the fun, gather a crew, appoint a captain, and build a seaworthy vessel. Tickets are thirty dollars per person and include an event t-shirt and a chance to win some great prizes. It's a complete list of rules. Register for the Great River Raph Race. Go to K two radio com. That's K, the number two radio dot com. Sponsored in part by Straight Line Vapors and Surf Wyoming.
Wake up with K G A B mornings and Gary Freeman. Everything you need to know to start your day on Cheyenne's number one news talk radio, AM six fifty K G A B.
Hey, good morning. Eight forty is the time here on Cheyenne's number one news talk radio station. My name is Gary Freeman. Glad to have you with us. Hey, it's Friday, National Donut Day. And don't forget, there's going to be a lot of people's offspring tooling around Laramie County one because they get out of school today at ten o'clock. So please be mindful of that as you're cruising around. I don't think there's any light fog in the area. Of course, there could be. So just be mindful of that. And mom and dads, you get to figure out what you're going to do with those kiddos for the summer. If you head out to k g a b dot com, we've got some five ways on how you can book your survival, summer survival booklet for the summer. In studio, we have with us here Amber Ash. She is the chairman of the Laramie County Commissioners. And of course, in order to be able to qualify for that, you have to be a Laramie County Commissioner, which is Amber. Glad to have you on the program today. I only get to see you every now and again unless it's on Facebook because there's five of you now. But I'll tell you, I really appreciate you guys coming on and the folks, the county commissioners that do come on. I think they've been some really good programming. So I appreciate you guys coming on the show.
Thank you for having us. I think it's really important that, you know, we be accessible and out there talking about what's going on in the county. And this is a great forum for us to be able to do that. So we appreciate it.
And I like to do it because you kind of get it straight from the horse's mouth. You know, there's really no spin per se or riding funny or whatever. We ask the questions and so you answer them. Let's, uh, let's move over to the Air Force Base a little bit. From what I understand, that F U Warren Air Force Base, and they've done a great job. They're trying to get it more involved with the community, but also they're looking more for partnerships. Laramie County Commissioner is part of that project at all or that idea?
We are. And so is the mayor and like Cheyenne leads and the Chamber of Commerce. And so we've had a couple of meetings in which we've identified opportunities throughout the, the community that we could be better partners or that we could work together to improve services. And so now we're, we're looking at how do you remove the barriers because it is a base? And obviously there's security issues and those kinds of things that need to be addressed. But how do you remove barriers in order, you know, to more fully integrate into the community?
Want to, if I may interrupt you, what kind of services specifically, and you can give us just a couple, three of them, are we talking about? Just to kind of give us a picture of what you're, what you're talking about?
Well, probably the one that would be that people can most readily relate to or, you know, be able to, to see is that, you know, the base has a golf course. And, and so how do we make it so that Jim, Tom, or whoever off the street could, could access the golf course? And, and we improve the city's rec facilities and, and their golf course gets more users, making it hopefully profitable for them. And, you know, just looking at different, I mean, throughout the, the recs program, access to the, the different ballfields, those kinds of things. Also looking at, like for instance, the, different ballfields, those kinds of things. Also looking at, like for instance, the, the city has driver training, CDL training, which is something the base needs. And so that's a service then that the city could provide back to the base. And, and so really looking at all those different opportunities that may exist because, you know, we have different facilities and rather than duplicating them, being able to take advantage or expand what we currently have in order to make it better meet the needs and, and make sure that Effie Warren continues to be strong in, in our community because they are such an important function of, of Cheyenne's economy that, you know, we want them to be here for a long, long time.
And you know, I would add this, Amber, that there are a lot of corporations and businesses in other towns that are a big part of the economy of a community. But I feel very blessed that we have men and women that are serving our country as a part of this community as well. Not only are they pivotal for the economy, but just to be able to be in and around and live around these great men and women that are serving our country. I think that's just an added benefit.
Absolutely. You know, I think it's fantastic that we have the base here. And, and that's part of, you know, the county helps contribute to the, the Wranglers for a lobbyist actually up in DC that works really hard because there's been several times they've threatened to close the base down. And so we help pay for that lobbyist to be in DC and to, to work to keep our base open because it's such an asset to Laramie County. And it's, it's, you know, it's awesome that we have them here. We want to maintain that.
We're talking with Amber Ash. She's county commissioner. If you have a question for today, 632-6500, 632-3323. Something else, well, let me ask you this. How is that partnership going? Is it still in the infant stages? Is it just kind of, we're, we're excited about it on both sides of the table? We're talking about it. Where are we as far as that?
Well, we basically narrowed it down to some primary objectives. So for instance, looking at, you know, like the recreation facilities that I mentioned earlier, but those are just in their bare infancy stages. And so we have to have, we're going to have to have some more meetings in order to be able to determine, you know, what really is feasible, what can we make happen, and what, what do we need to continue to work on? Or, and as we get in the process, we may find out that, you know, some of these things on the face of it seem like they're feasible, but they're not really.
All right. Well, let's take a phone call. Good morning. You're on with County Commissioner Amber Ash.
Good morning.
Yes, sir. It's your turn.
I'm wondering if the county commissioners are still planning to waste money on a move to Archer or in abandoning the best facility west of the Mississippi River or each county fair and waste $9 million out there at Archer complex when we don't need to. All right. Thank you. Archer.
Um, well, I think that there's a couple of things there. One, you know, we've been working on moving the, the fair to Archer for quite a while. That's something that I personally support. I think it's, it's evidenced by the fact that, you know, we've continued to fund improvements out there. So like the, the lighting and getting the water out there and working on the siding on the buildings, those kinds of things. The kitchen, a lot of that money for those types of projects comes from Sliber Over the Cap, which is actually awarded from the state to us. And then we dish it out. You know, I think, I think when you say that we have, Cheyenne Frontier Days has an awesome facility, but there's another component of that in that Cheyenne Frontier Days is, is, you know, they're looking to expand, that they're looking to change some, the way that they're doing some things, better utilize their, their space to generate more revenue, offer more events. And, you know, and part of that is some of the things that are utilized by the fair, they need to look at and, and look at reutilizing those. And so I think it's more of a conversation than just saying it's a waste of money. I think it's important to look at.
Well, and, and to look back too, Amber, you know, that basically, as I understand, the Archer complex was bought, donated, whatever the case was for the county fair. So all these other things, shooting ranges and facilities out there are more of an afterthought than the original plan. So really, it sounds like you guys are taking a couple of steps back and trying to set up the Archer complex for what it was originally for was to house the Laramie County Fair. Is that pretty close to correct or?
Yeah, we're definitely looking at what are our options? You know, part of one of the, at the very beginning of the show, I mentioned that we sent five grants for Wyoming Business Council. One of them was for the fair's feasibility study and, and looking at, you know, the breaking even, what it would cost to, to operate, what types of functions would we have? And so, you know, and, and I think that's really important because a lot of times we build projects and then, and then we're like, oh wait, it costs three times as much to, to heat this building or whatever the case may be. And, and so the fair is really doing their due diligence. You know, we've, we've gone back to the drawing board after the voters turned down the initial project. We've said, what do we really need to operate a fair out here? And we've scaled back the, the project. I think it was originally 25 million. Now it's more of a $9 million project and it's in two phases. The majority of the cost, of course, lie in the show barn itself. But it's something that we're continuing to work on.
All right. Very good. We'll take this last break and wrap it up here with Laramie County Commissioner Chairman Amber Ash. And we might be able to squeeze in a phone call. We'll see what happens. My name is Gary Freeman. This is KGAB Mornings. 8:50 is the time. Good morning.
This is why you work so hard to pay the mortgage. Because home is more than four walls and a roof. It's that porch swing on a summer evening. It's everybody over for Sunday dinner and your family sleeping in their own beds at night. Making Home Affordable is a free government resource that can make paying the mortgage easier. Call 888-995-HOPE or visit makinghomeaffordable.gov.
Good night, mama.
This is Y. Brought to you by the U.S. Treasury, HUD and the Ad Council.
The Wind River Casino is already your party destination. And now with its own hotel, it's your daycation getaway. The Wind River Hotel and Casino, featuring 87 modern beautifully appointed rooms and three luxurious suites. It's the perfect weekend trip or just for a day. Enjoy Wyoming's best casino action and fine dining in the Red Willow Restaurant. So if time is short, make your next vacation a daycation at the Wind River Hotel and Casino.
Here at Mountain View Regional Hospital, we know that joint and sports injuries are painful. With over 100 years of combined experience, our team of board certified orthopedic surgeons is here to get you better faster. Offering convenient access to the latest in surgical and non-invasive care with clinics in Cheyenne. Call 877-266-4700 or online at mvrhospital.com. Mountain View Regional Hospital, we find answers.
AJ Miller for family owned Kia of Cheyenne. Buy a new car here and become part of the family. During our summer sales event, come in for a new 2016 Kia Sorento and hit the road. Any road will cost you less and be more comfortable with new looks, more cabin space and advanced technology. 2016 Kia Sorento starts under $25,000. Less 2015 model competitors. Every new Kia comes with a 10-year, 100,000 mile warranty. Come by or go to kiascheyenne.com or we'll always beat any deal on any new Kia in any state.
Get into a career, not just a job. Higher education is the gateway to so many opportunities. Register today at Laramie County Community College. It starts here. Visit lccc.wy.edu. L triple C in Cheyenne.
This ain't your grandma's talk show. Be here for the Glenn Beck Program. Weekdays at four, weekends at five, exclusively on AM 650 KGAB.
And 8:53 is your time. 62 degrees here in the capital city. Hey, I can dig some of the sunshine coming out. May not be much, but beggars can't be choosers. And we're glad to have you with us here this morning. And if you're just joining us, we have Amber Ash. She is the chairman of the Laramie County Commissioners. Glad to have her with us. And just kind of talking about some of the cool stuff that's going on here in the county. And Amber, of course, we are coming up, Sean Hannity is going to cut us off here in about a minute and a half. Real quick, do you want to talk about the Tour 23 YO Business Alliance that's going on, looking at the state and local commissions?
So the Wyoming Business Alliance has gone around or is in the process of going around to every county in this state and having these meetings about how do we improve our economic outlook? Where are we today and how do we improve upon it? And so on the first of June, earlier this week, we had the opportunity to sit down, the city of Cheyenne, the mayor was there, Cheyenne leads, Cheyenne Chamber of Commerce, business owners throughout the community, legislators, all, all five county commissioners were there and just really talk about, you know, what are opportunities within the community to improve our economic outlook?
Now, are you as, well, I'll just ask you, are you folks, as far as the commission, getting input from the community to bring to the table? Or are you just having discussions?
Well, I think it's a mix of things. I mean, I think part of our job is to go out and be there to get input all the time. And then you don't, I guess I don't necessarily go out and say, I'm going to a Tour 23 meeting. Can I get input? But I should be having those conversations all the time. And I feel like I do.
That's what I mean. That's what I mean. Are you taking, you know, months and different weeks of conversation and saying, here, this is some other angle we may want to look at? That is what I meant. Yeah.
Yeah, I absolutely think, you know, that that's part of the conversation is, you know, a lot of it, like we had 10 different groups that were coming up with ideas of, you know, several of them focused on the downtown. How do we prove, improve the downtown? Looking at air service, how do we improve air service and maintain our air service? Looking at things like transportation connectivity to recreational facilities. I mean, there's just a wide variety of things that, that come up in those discussions. And that's part of, you know, conversations that are occurring on a regular basis as well as with the business owners. You know, they're having those conversations too. How do we make sure that our business is strong, sustainable? And how can the community as a whole support that?
Yeah, that's great. I know a lot of people are excited about revitalizing downtown. It's just how do we get to that place? But I know that city folks and DDA and, and Greater Chamber of Cheyenne and, and all those folks are working on it. Well, Amber, I appreciate you carving out part of your Thursday to be here today. It was good to see you. And if we want to, maybe we missed an opportunity this morning to get ahold of you. How can we do that if we want to get ahold of you and maybe have a question or a comment to add?
People can always email me. It's just aash, A-A-S-H, at laramiecouncil.com or they can call me 630-9470.
All right, Amber, have a wonderful weekend and we'll see you next time, whenever that is.
Well, thank you very much for having me, Gary.
All right. You're welcome. You're welcome. All right. 8:57 is the time. Sean Hannity, Morning Minute. After the top of the hour, we'll have Boyd Wiggum. We're going to talk about property, property rights and all that other great stuff. Plus, your phone calls at 632-6500, 632-3323. Sean Hannity up next. Good morning.